Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on June 3, 2022. The meeting will convene at 6:00 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for this meeting. In accordance with policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion.
Do you want to say?
Would you like a beer?
Would you like a beer?
Okay.
All right.
She hopes you're good.
I imagine so.
Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational
But there are good people.
Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, June 20, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the Board Meeting
She has to.
Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street.
It's crazy.
The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the
The second one.
Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working
You're still in your scrabble.
hours.
Oh, she did?
Please note that the Board meeting in June, July, and August will begin at 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed
That's cool.
that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Erdenberger will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
And you can follow. It's at the top of your agenda. The OPS vision is every student, every day, prepared for success, and our mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger.
Present.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Suarez.
Here.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Present.
Tealyn.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Treasurers Report. Colleagues, if you have questions about that, please let us know. Moving on to Superintendent Comments, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board, those here in attendance, and those watching from home. Last week, we held an opening celebration for Buena Vista. This is the first of many to come. Many of our students have had the opportunity to begin participating in activities in our new schools. The opening celebrations allow our families and community to see their investment firsthand. Thank you voters. Tomorrow, we'll be hosting an opening celebration for Westview High School at 2:00 PM. Westview High School is located at 156th Street and Ida. We look forward to opening celebrations for our elementary schools in August. On Wednesday, we welcome students for Next Level Learning. More than 13,500 students will participate in summer enrichment opportunities provided by Next Level Learning. This is part of our work to address immediate and long-term academic needs for Form III interrupted school years. The Summer Reading Challenge, reminding our students to continue to read throughout the summer and submit your minutes read on our website. We have already reached 33% of our goal of 2 million minutes. Keep up the reading all summer long. We have to set that goal a little higher, clearly, in one week. Last week, we shared information regarding our desire to provide students, provide stipends for our staff. They will be 4,500 for full-time staff and $2,250 for part-time staff who work more than 20 hours a week. These are limited stipends, each school year for two years. That's because pending Board approval, ESER funds would cover the costs. ESER funds expire in September of 2024. To amend our ESER plan and offer these stipends, we will need to shift funding from other initiatives like long-term facilities maintenance. Those needs are not disappearing, but we see the time-sensitive need to invest in our current and returning staff. This acknowledges the additional needs and challenges of this time. Alongside planning for these stipends, we are planning classroom assignments and schedules for the next school year. Omaha Public Schools will continue to recruit and hire for all open positions. At the same time, we need to prepare based on the staff currently committed. With that in mind, we are building our 2022-2023 schedule anticipating approximately 230 unfilled certificated positions. We have a total of approximately 4,400 certified positions in our district. Some students will not notice a change in their classrooms; for other, the number of students could grow from two to five students. You may be aware that we have doubled the number of student teachers joining our district this fall. We will focus those pairings to larger classrooms where a student/teacher can assist and still find a great experience with one of our certified, high-performing mentor teachers in the Omaha Public Schools. We already meet with our Teachers Union Weekly and will discuss other opportunities to work together. Tonight, our Board will consider the changes to the ESER plan. If the proposal is approved, we will go to our labor partners who need to accept the stipends for their members. The Nebraska Department of Education would give final endorsement to the ESER amendment prior to it going to the United States Department of Education. Congratulations are in order for Ann Rogers of North High for achieving a top score of 36 on the ACT College Entrance Exam, to the Bryan High Boys Soccer Team for reaching the semifinals at the State Soccer Championship, to the Omaha Public Schools NSA A State Track and Field Champions, Jalen Lloyd in the 100-meter-long jump and triple jump, and Andrew Brown in the 300-meter hurdle, to the Central High Boys Track and Field Team for finishing second place at the State Track and Field Championship, to the Burke High Girls Track and Field Team for finishing eighth at the State Track and Field Championship, to all the Omaha Public School Medalists at the NSA A State Track and Field Championships, to Burke High's Theater Program for earning the Outstanding Musical Theater Production Award from the Nebraska High School Theater Academy for their production of Disney's Freaky Fridays. So congratulations to Emily Mariki and her team over there, to Brianna Nash of Burke High for earning the Outstanding Performance in a Lead Role Award from the Nebraska High School Theater Academy, to Toby Rischling of Central High for earning the Outstanding Performance in a Supporting Role from the Nebraska High School Theater Academy. This concludes my remarks for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Moving on to Board Comments, Ms. Suarez.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly share with the teachers of Omaha Public Schools that I attended a banquet last Thursday evening, and I'm a member of the South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, which Kimara Snipes, whose seat that I'm now filling, she is president of this organization, and I had nominated the teachers for the Neighborhood Hero Award for 2022, and I just brought the plaque to share today with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Suarez. Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Madam President. I actually didn't think of you speaking this early. Thank you, everyone in attendance. As you know, this month is a celebration of Juneteenth and Pride Month, so this meeting I would dedicate to Pride Month and the next meeting to Juneteenth. As you know, this is Pride Month. This isn't just a month for us to celebrate who we are, the LGBTQIA+ community, but it's also a celebration and acknowledgement of those who died and passed from HIV and AIDS in not just the United States, but the entire world. It is something that has stricken the LGBT community very hard, particularly African-American, African descent. So, as a person who lost his uncle of that, I want to tell anybody that has had that or anybody living with that disease and lifelong illness that you are loved, you are heard, and your community supports you. Nationally, they say 10% of every community identifies with the LGBTQIA+ community, and that means in OPS, that's 5,200 students that we have, and that is very significant. And I want those students to know, as well as our staff, that this Board supports you, our community supports you, and you are OPS strong. You make us very proud on being who you are and not standing down to anybody that is discriminating against you or trying to be prejudiced. And finally, I want to leave you with a quote from my grandmother that she told my mom, and she said, this has been guarded to me, but I think it can resonate with a lot of families. He's very smart. I want you to encourage him, but don't push. And when you think of that, that is something that we all need to do. We're living in a world where there's a lot of unknown, and one of the things we always have to do is encourage our students, encourage our staff, and make sure every environment that we get in, we should always know that we are human beings and we want the best for each person. So with that, I thank you so much, Madam President, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. I'd like to take a moment tonight to talk a little bit about public comment and leadership. The purpose of public comment is to allow you, the public, to exercise your right under the Nebraska Open Meetings Act to attend and speak at public meetings. The entirety of the statute is on the back wall there on the poster provided by the Nebraska School of Boards Association. The statute and the courts have found reasonable limits can be placed on public comment, but we, as a Board, have placed very, decided to place very few limits on our public comment. This is your five minutes, and you can use it pretty much however you'd like, which is one of the reasons that Board members refrain from speaking during this time. It's your time, not ours. These are your rights under the Open Meetings Act and our Board policies, and people obviously use public comment for a variety of purposes. As a Board member who sits up here and is at least in principle one of the nine people that are the intended audience of your comments, I'd like to provide you my perspective on the most effective uses that I've experienced. And to be clear, I can only speak for myself as an individual Board member. There have been parents and students and teachers who have brought incidents and experiences to my attention. During times when we're making significant decisions, many have come to add their voices to the conversation about how we should proceed. But sometimes it isn't the most effective forum, and sometimes it is, but five minutes isn't enough, and sometimes the timing isn't right. If you want your voice to be considered carefully, speaking at the same meeting as the vote might be too late. By that point, I have received and reached out to many stakeholders, gathered information, and it's not always easy to, you know, vet or easily incorporate information from public meetings into our decisions. Sometimes email is a better way. It can be, as long as you, and nuanced as necessary to communicate effectively. It can provide time for reflection by your Board member rather than simply having to move on to the next person in the queue. I read every email from the community. I respond to all that I can. I don't respond with canned, pat answers. Many clearly come from a place of anger, some from a place of misinformation. My approach thus far has been to respond with empathy, to attempt to educate, to try to understand the root issue that's, you know, being communicated, and provide information that'll help the student, the family, or the teacher move forward. It's not uncommon for me to spend half an hour responding to a single email as I track down, you know, a rumor or a single piece of information, try to separate it from the fact from the fiction with clarity, nuance, and empathy. If you do send an email, please include your home address and your connection to the district. It's important to know where these comments are coming from and whether they're from within our community or from outside our community. Sometimes it's a phone call or a meeting. My phone number is listed on the OPS website. I answer my phone. I make every effort to meet with constituents and stakeholders to ask to meet in person. It allows for thoughtful dialogue. Regardless of the forum you choose with your Board member, remember that I am human, and despite the efforts that I make, like those when I mentioned when responding to email, your approach will affect how your message is received. It doesn't help when folks come to the podium with deliberate lies or mischaracterizations, venomous, invective, unsupported accusations of unethical behavior, and wild-eyed conspiracies aimed at hardworking people of integrity. These are not only not helpful, they are, in the most literal sense, counterproductive. I have seen them swing votes in the opposite direction of the cause that these folks are fighting for, which brings me to leadership. First, the self-appointed variety. If someone comes to the podium frequently enough claiming to represent your community to, in fact, be a product of your community without being contested, people will start to believe it. When that representation makes personal attacks, mischaracterizes, and their most effective tool of argument is self-righteous bombast, people will believe you support it and that such behavior is a product of your community. Second, the more formal kind. If you have been entrusted with, from, by the members of your community to bring a message to Board members and to work together with them toward solutions, you have to show up. If the only place you are showing up is at this podium to rail against me, then you aren't building relationships. We aren't having thoughtful dialogue or working toward any solutions. The OEA president has said that Board members are not hearing the voice of teachers. In some ways, I'm not surprised that he doesn't think the message is getting through because he is not delivering it. With regard to me personally, he has not shown up anywhere but in this room, despite the fact that I've reached out to him directly several times with an open invitation to call me or set up a meeting to discuss concerns of teachers. He has not reached out with a single call or email since I joined the Board. When I asked for data, the OEA had collected on teacher concerns, I received a single email stating he would deliver it. That was in January. I am grateful to the teachers who have responded to me and reached out to me directly. Your voices, the voices of those that are here tonight, are very helpful in understanding how we can move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tealyn. Ms. Cassidy?
It's like, I'll go next. Go in between either of us. Thank you so much, President Holman. First, I want to start with saying how much I am in full support of the ESER Plan Amendment that is on tonight's agenda. I'm very appreciative of Dr. Logan and the district that they've worked diligently to be able to move funds around, reprioritize to make this happen. Some of the needs, we know, they're not going to go away. Facilities maintenance, it's just not going to go away. But this is a time and an opportunity that we can show our staff that we really appreciate them and the tireless work that they do, that you all do. Guess I should say you all, since. These stipends are just another way that we can show our support now, in addition to steps that we have already taken this year, so I hope my fellow Board members are in support as well. I do want to take next a quick moment to acknowledge and apologize for remarks a few months ago that I made that may have conveyed that I am not in 100% support of our staff and that I don't value you folks every day. It's quite the opposite. Unfortunately, I allowed my frustration over the challenging situation that's facing our district and so many others across the country. It was misdirected and it was not meant to be at you folks. As one of my teachers from Castalar reminded me, she emailed me the next day, and she reminded me that, yes, there's lots of negativity, yes, there's lots of frustration, but she reminded me that we should not and need to try not to let it overwhelm us. It's tough as Board members, it's tough as teachers because we've all, we've been in it for two years plus. So she reminded me of that, and I just want to tell her thank you. So Kathy out there from Castalar, I don't know if you're out there, but thank you for reminding me in your email. Our staff, you guys, continue to show up every single day. You feed our kids, you teach our kids, you discipline our kids when it's needed. We all know that teaching, it's so much more than teaching. It's so much more than teaching. It has been frustrating, though, that we've acted as a Board where we can, and it doesn't seem to meet everyone's needs and everyone's wants all the time, and it does get very difficult and disappointing in that regard. So I guess, as we all show up for children, and this ESER Amendment is just another way that hopefully as a Board and as a district, we can continue to show all of our staff members, all of them, part-time, full-time, that we are investing in them, that you matter now, and that we see you. Hopefully, it will take some of the financial burden off and bring some joy back to people's lives. Hopefully, these stipends can do some good. Maybe some of you can plan vacations that are much needed at the end of the school year next year or now. So as we all try and continue to face the challenges that we still face today because COVID's not completely over and the challenges are not over, I hope that we will all continue to give each other grace, and I hope that you will give me a little bit as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Holman. Well, usually, I would point out now one of the cool things that's on the agenda, and I will not skip that. One of the items is the Huddle contracts, if that means anything to you all, in connection with working with our two new high schools to get them signed up on Huddle, which is a web-based software that allows coaches and athletes to review game and practice films, scout opponents, and improve performance based on video analysis. I mean, like, even during the game. It came to the attention of the district that each school, each of our high schools, had sort of independently contracted, and there was a lack of consistency, or more importantly, lack of equity. And I just was informed that that item has been pulled. Sorry. You can look forward to it, presumably, but that's okay because that's not what I wanted to do tonight anyway. I have been looking forward to the first school board meeting after the end of the school year to genuinely celebrate what has been accomplished. I, as a former teacher, I know there is absolutely no better feeling in the world than the end of the last day of school, just knowing you can close the books, lock the door, and even if you're going to be teaching summer school, it's a fresh start. And I, even though I haven't been teaching for about six years now, I still envy that feeling that doesn't happen anymore. We also had the opportunity to fist bump, shake hands, or in my case, high-five hundreds of students. Over 2,000 students graduated in the last week, and the class sizes ranged from my JP Lord School, which had six kids, to our huge high schools with hundreds and hundreds. I know I was at North High and they had close to 400 kids. I like to think of it as 400 high-fives, but I'm going to rethink that decision next year. So, but anyway, I mean, we have so much to celebrate and hopefully so much to be proud of because it hasn't been easy. I haven't been on this Board through all of this with you. I've been watching it from the seats and then now up here, and I know it hasn't been easy on anybody, but it all seems to focus on the teachers, and there's not enough words to express how grateful we are for everyone who just stuck with it, came to school as many days as they possibly could, and covered for their colleagues, and, you know, all of the above. With that in mind, I know that there is an issue on the table right now which has caused you to rally tonight, and that is what appears to be a connection between the ESER's Amendment to provide stipends and class sizes. I know that in the, I can only speak for myself, but most of-
You know, a rumor or a single piece of information. Try to separate it from the fact from the fiction with clarity, nuance, and empathy. If you do send an email, please include your home address and your connection to the district. It's important to know where these comments are coming from and whether they're from within our community or from outside our community. Sometimes it's a phone call or a meeting. My phone number is listed on the OPS website. I answer my phone. I make every effort to meet with constituents and stakeholders to ask to meet in person. It allows for thoughtful dialogue. Regardless of the form you choose with your board member, remember that I am human. And despite the efforts that I make, like those when I mentioned when responding to email, your approach will affect how your message is received. It doesn't help when folks come to the podium with deliberate lies or mischaracterizations, venomous, invective, unsupported accusations of unethical behavior, and wild-eyed conspiracies aimed at hard-working people of integrity. These are not only not helpful, they are, in the most literal sense, counterproductive. I have seen them swing votes in the opposite direction of the cause that these folks are fighting for. Which brings me to leadership. First, the self-appointed variety. If someone comes to the podium frequently enough claiming to represent your community to in fact be a product of your community without being contested, people will start to believe it. When that representation makes personal attacks, mischaracterizes, and their most effective tool of argument is self-righteous bombast, people will believe you support it and that such behavior is a product of your community. Second, the more formal kind. If you have been entrusted with, by the members of your community to bring a message to board members and to work together with them toward solutions, you have to show up. If the only place you are showing up is at this podium to rail against me, then you aren't building relationships. We aren't having thoughtful dialogue or working toward any solutions. The OEA president has said that board members are not hearing the voice of teachers. In some ways, I'm not surprised that he doesn't think the message is getting through because he is not delivering it. With regard to me personally, he has not shown up anywhere but in this room, despite the fact that I've reached out to him directly several times with an open invitation to call me or set up a meeting to discuss concerns of teachers. He has not reached out with a single call or email since I joined the board. When I asked for data the OEA had collected on teacher concerns, I received a single email stating he would deliver it. That was in January. I am grateful to the teachers who have responded to me and reached out to me directly. Your voices, the voices of those that are here tonight, are very helpful in understanding how we can move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tealyn. Ms. Cassidy.
It's like, I'll go next. Go in between either of us. Thank you so much, President Holman. First, I want to start with saying how much I am in full support of the ESER Plan Amendment that is on tonight's agenda. I'm very appreciative of Dr. Logan and the district that they've worked diligently to be able to move funds around, reprioritize to make this happen. Some of the needs, we know, they're not going to go away. Facilities maintenance, it's just not going to go away. But this is a time and an opportunity that we can show our staff that we really appreciate them and the tireless work that they do, that you all do. Guess I should say you all since. These stipends are just another way that we can show our support now, in addition to steps that we have already taken this year. So I hope my fellow board members are in support as well. I do want to take next a quick moment to acknowledge and apologize for remarks a few months ago that I made that may have conveyed that I am not in 100% support of our staff and that I don't value you folks every day. It's quite the opposite. Unfortunately, I allowed my frustration over the challenging situation that's facing our district and so many others across the country. It was misdirected and it was not meant to be at you folks. As one of my teachers from Castalar reminded me, she emailed me the next day, and she reminded me that, yes, there's lots of negativity, yes, there's lots of frustration, but she reminded me that we should not and need to try not to let it overwhelm us. It's tough as board members, it's tough as teachers because we've all, we've been in it for two years plus. So she reminded me of that, and I just want to tell her thank you. So Kathy out there from Castalar, I don't know if you're out there, but thank you for reminding me in your email. Our staff, you guys, continue to show up every single day. You feed our kids, you teach our kids, you discipline our kids when it's needed. We all know that teaching, it's so much more than teaching. It's so much more than teaching. It has been frustrating, though, that we've acted as a board where we can. And it doesn't seem to meet everyone's needs and everyone's wants all the time. And it does get very difficult and disappointing in that regard. So I guess as we all show up for children and this ESER Amendment is just another way that hopefully as a board and as a district, we can continue to show all of our staff members, all of them, part-time, full-time, that we are investing in them, that you matter now and that we see you. Hopefully, it will take some of the financial burden off and bring some joy back to people's lives. Hopefully, these stipends can do some good. Maybe some of you can plan vacations that are much needed at the end of the school year next year or now. So as we all try and continue to face the challenges that we still face today because COVID is not completely over and the challenges are not over, I hope that we will all continue to give each other grace and I hope that you will give me a little bit as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you, President Holman. Well, usually I would point out now one of the cool things that's on the agenda, and I will not skip that. One of the items is the Huddle contracts, if that means anything to you all, in connection with working with our two new high schools to get them signed up on Huddle, which is a web-based software that allows coaches and athletes to review game and practice films, scout opponents, and improve performance based on video analysis. I mean, like even during the game. It came to the attention of the district that each school, each of our high schools had sort of independently contracted, and there was a lack of consistency or more importantly, lack of equity. And I just was informed that that item has been pulled. Sorry. You can look forward to it, presumably. But that's okay because that's not what I wanted to do tonight anyway. I have been looking forward to the first school board meeting after the end of the school year to genuinely celebrate what has been accomplished. As a former teacher, I know there is absolutely no better feeling in the world than the end of the last day of school. Just knowing you can close the books, lock the door, and even if you're going to be teaching summer school, it's a fresh start. And I, even though I haven't been teaching for about six years now, I still envy that feeling that doesn't happen anymore. We also had the opportunity to fist bump, shake hands, or in my case, high-five hundreds of students. Over 2,000 students graduated in the last week. And the class sizes ranged from my JP Lord School, which had six kids, to our huge high schools with hundreds and hundreds. I know I was at North High and they had close to 400 kids. I like to think of it as 400 high-fives, but I'm going to rethink that decision next year. So, but anyway, I mean, we have so much to celebrate and hopefully so much to be proud of because it hasn't been easy. I haven't been on this board through all of this with you. I've been watching it from the seats and then now up here. And I know it hasn't been easy on anybody, but it all seems to focus on the teachers. And there's not enough words to express how grateful we are for everyone who just stuck with it, came to school as many days as they possibly could, and covered for their colleagues and, you know, all of the above. With that in mind, I know that there is an issue on the table right now which has caused you to rally tonight, and that is what appears to be a connection between the ESER's Amendment to provide stipends and class sizes. I know that in the, I can only speak for myself, but most of us, as we have looked at the ESER's issue, had nothing to do with class sizes. It was strictly stipend for people that deserved it for having worked so hard. And it's not a quid pro quo or anything for class sizes. But I do understand, based on all the emails we've been receiving, that there appears to be a connection between the two. And I wanted to let you know that when we get to the ESER's discussion on the agenda tonight, the board members anticipate having an opportunity to ask questions about the class sizes as well. I know there is a lot of misinformation out there in terms of what's going on, what the class sizes are going to be, so on and so forth, just from the emails that I've been getting. And to kind of segue off of what Mr. Tealyn said, during your comments, we sit here, we listen, we try to process and take that information in and use it as we move forward. But we are listening without the benefit of responding. I would hope that unlike as usually happens, after people have spoken, they've had their say and they leave the room. That's not exactly how a dialogue happens. And I would preview for you now that we hope to have some conversations when we get to that point in the agenda that will provide real information to you. You can stay pissed off at that point if you want to, but let's wait until we actually know. Can I say that? Good thing I'm not teaching anymore. Because I never said it in the classroom. But anyway, so please, please, if you have time tonight, stick around. Likely to look like in operation and then decide how you feel about it. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Vice President Erdnberger.
Thank you. First, I don't know, my computer's been down for about a week and a half, so I know nothing. My computer has been down for about a week and a half. So any communication that was sent, I didn't answer because it wasn't working. It was repaired tonight and fixed, so I may be back in business. Part in red gives you the information on the agenda to board members. I like the idea of the Huddle Contract. I sure wish we'd do something about sports and to help our coaches, to help our schools. I want us to be ranked higher than we are in all of our sports. I'm really into that because I have noticed a real lack of, number one, for us. And with 52,000 students, we should be able to come up with that. So it's been a big deal for me, and I just haven't talked about it much, but I'm talking about it now. I want to also commend and tell the students of Burke, when I spoke at the graduation, it probably could not have been more perfect. I mean, it was just, when I got done with it all, it was so wonderful and they behaved so nicely. And of course, I told them, I knew they'd have a great demeanor and maybe they just had to live up to it because I already told them that at the beginning of the conversation. When I get a phone call, I do, or an email, if you leave your phone number, I will call you. I think business gets done much better with a phone call than going back and forth for three days with an email and you don't know what, who's thinking what on the other end of it. On class sizes, I want you to know that I was once down to 19 students because they were about 24 or 25 in the room, but they were moving, different things were happening. And so I was so low, I didn't know what to do with it because I've never had anything that low. I have had as high as 39. That was in a different day and age. That's when everybody wore dress clothes to school and everybody just came to school and they behaved and they did what their parents told them to. And that brings into mind the thing I think about parents. It is extremely, I can't say that enough to you, that we get our parents to cooperate with us. I don't know if we're going to be doing contracts with them, home visits with them, with somebody with us, but I think it's just going to pieces. They are not helping us out. The schools that are lagging behind is because you don't have that kind of cooperation that you need. And I think we just have to do something or we're going to stay right where we are. The unfilled positions, that does bother me. I had a lot of student teachers and they are a blessing when you have a large-size class, especially with the split room. I used to have them teach the second graders and I teach the third graders in the morning and in the afternoon I teach everyone. I want to tell you that when we talk about salaries, I always want our district to be comparable, first of all, within the city and then with the states close by us. I want us to be that kind of a salary for you. There is nothing more that we can do. There's only so much in the budget that we can do and we do. I know that the negotiations are trying to do the best they can to help you. So I hope that is going to help you some. And I'm really happy to see the teachers here tonight. And the only way we know anything is for the teachers to talk to us. So if you're not talking to me, I'm not knowing anything. So that's just about where it is. So please remember that. I like to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crackey. Dr. Logan?
Thank you. I neglected to introduce our principals here who tonight. There are three that are new. One is not a new principal, but he's new to our district, and that's Mr. Tyler Havotny, who'll be, if you could stand Tyler, Mr. Havotny, who's going to Catlin Elementary, and we're excited to have him. He's joining us from Westside Community Schools. Janine Mann, who is currently an assistant principal at Wakanda. Thank you, I'm sorry, let's go, I'm sorry, back to Mr. Havotny. Let's give him a round of applause. He's also a talented artist, and he probably doesn't know that I know that, but he is a very talented artist. Janine Mann, who is joining, is the principal of Lothrip, and she is currently the assistant principal at Wakanda Elementary School. So Janine Mann. And Avery and Penelope's dad, who's here. Aren't you tickled? You got a shout-out. To Mr. Steven Soto, who's a, we are very excited. He is an elementary teaching and learning consultant and now the, and has been a summer school principal because that's where I first met him, at Ashton Park Robbins, correct? Okay? And we're tickled to have Mr. Soto joining us at Ponca Elementary School. So thank you. If one last point, is that this morning when we introduced our new principals at our week-long principal development, which is really stellar, the principals clapped the loudest and the longest for our new principals in recognition that they are taking on leadership at a very difficult time. And so it was meaningful and very, very clear on why they want to congratulate you. And we all thank you for the lift that you will have moving forward next year. Very grateful and OPS proud of all three of you. So thank you. Now, Avery and Penelope, you can go and get some ice cream and you can go home. How's that? And stay up late. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on now to public comment. We have 13 speakers tonight who have submitted request-to-speak forms. The board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. The same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes, excuse me. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about, so we ask that you respect those opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentation. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB 83 by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify themselves, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. Tonight, we have two requests for waiver. One is an OPS student. So Sasha, when you come up to speak, you are okay. You do not have to give your address. And then the other person requesting waiver is Rachel Benzoni. And with that, I will entertain a motion to waive the requirement that those named individuals state their address at the podium.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. Any discussion? And I believe everybody saw the document that went around as to why. Yes?
But we need some clarity on the, not on the student, on the other individual because we've had, as far as that goes, the rest of us are subject to the same kind of thing. Our address, our phone number is out there. And so I didn't know why we were going to excuse the student but let the other one be excused. We haven't excused someone else who's been coming a lot. So I'm just, want some clarification? Can anyone provide that?
I guess I don't, I don't understand what you're asking.
I can understand that we are letting the student not give their address.
Right. Because they're a minor, correct?
And I don't understand the other individual, why we are not letting them give their address. We usually do.
The other person's name that I just mentioned? That person is requesting that they not share their address and the form was sent around and shared, so I'll let.
But I don't know why, exactly. Because the other people will be sharing their address.
But this person has asked for their address not to be shared.
Well, then I guess that we should do the same with the other individual.
Mr. Tealyn's bringing you the form right now so that you can see why that person.
I know, I saw that. My situation is just the same as theirs, so.
Thank you. So we'll vote after this discussion.
Mark was going to say something.
I was just going to say that we don't really have to have a discussion. It was given to us, so basically it's just a vote. Does that make sense?
Yeah, like we vote every week.
So if the person didn't clarify it, it's a vote of yes or no.
Well, I didn't want them in the same package.
Correct. Mine will be a no. So we'll vote on the second person that Dr. Holman introduced.
So we're going to vote on the student first?
We don't have to vote on the student.
It's on the back of the way.
Because it's an OPS student.
The other one, then we're going to vote on.
The other person we will vote on.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, Mr. Ray.
To not. No, to have to, yes, yes.
Could we clarify what a no vote is and what a yes vote is?
That they don't, they do have to give their address.
Okay.
Yes or no means they do have to.
Snow?
Yes, no means they do have to give their address, so no.
Tealyn? No. Cassidy? Erdnberger?
No.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
No.
Crackey?
No.
Three aye.
Dr. Holman? I'd like to make a motion.
Let me do this.
Oh, you have to finish that. Sorry.
So motion fails, and so you will have to provide your address once you come to the, you will not have to provide your address once you come to the podium. Sorry. This is so confusing today. What is going on? You will not have to, will have to provide your address tonight when you come to the podium. Good grief, sorry about that. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion in keeping with the provisions that we have 13 people speaking tonight. Okay, if I'm doing my math correctly, that's for more than an hour. So in keeping with the provisions of 8320 and in order to provide all of those who timely submitted their request to be heard forms with the opportunity to speak, I move to suspend Policy 8346, so Part E, which would otherwise limit the speaking time to an hour, and instead to say that the speaking period will last until all speakers who timely submitted their request to be heard forms have been heard for tonight's meeting only.
Second.
Okay, the motion on the floor by Vice President Erdnberger to suspend Policy 8346 to extend the maximum duration of public comment until all speakers have time, until all speakers have been heard and it's been seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Ms. Crackey?
I'm going to be clear. Does that mean that each speaker will still have five minutes or?
Yes.
Okay, that's right. Thank you. I want to be sure they do.
Any other discussion? Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nine, nine.
Motion carries. And I apologize for that. We do this every single week, but I don't know what the issue was tonight. A lot of confusion. All right, with that, our first speaker of the night is Gina Durfee.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, board and executive administrators. I want to thank you guys all for your vulnerability tonight. Everyone who spoke earlier tonight talked about some vulnerable issues, and I think having those discussions is really important, and that's kind of what I'm going to address here. Gee, oh, I forgot to start with Gina Durfee. 721 Sunset Trail, and it's even written here, so I wouldn't forget, so. I speak from a really varied perspective. I'm a parent of three recent OPS graduates. I'm a former OPS teacher. I'm a lifelong and current educator. I'm a restorative practitioner, a special education advocate, an education association member in my district, and I'm a community activist. Relationships, which Mr. Tealyn talked about earlier, I know that relationships are what makes education work. Students will only work for staff members and teachers with whom they have a positive relationship. And I know that teachers will only work, teachers and staff will only work for administrators with whom they have a positive and trusting relationship. And building administrators will work together with central office staff with whom they have positive relationships. Relationships is what makes education work. I see you guys losing staff because these relationships are damaged. Without, so this brings us to the loss of our experienced teachers. Without consistent teachers, kids don't have positive relationships. Kids can't feel safe if they don't have trusted adults. And kids who don't feel safe show that in their behavior. Without appropriate supports for those behaviors, that can make staff feel unsafe, ineffective, and unsupported. Kids need stable adults who care about them and who they know will be there for them. There's so much to unpack here. You guys have a tough job. So here's some things I urge you to consider. And I want you to know, I did leave my email address and phone number, and I am happy to speak with anyone. First, as you've shown tonight, that you're working on, support your teachers so they can support students. Next, make sure you give time so they can address their own needs and work as well as that of students. Next, support students in crisis or showing signs of budding crisis from a multi-tiered system of support. Give each school what they need, not a one-size-fits-all solution. Importantly, listen to the teachers who have been telling you publicly and privately for the last two years that we would be right where we are right now. Listen to them, work with them. Teachers and the OEA have attempted to work with administration and have been disregarded, not heard, and disrespected in this process. Fix this. Board members, I implore you to direct executive administrators to work with teachers. I personally offer to facilitate restorative restorative circles for O E A and O P S administrators to build trust and fair process. I'm a trainer, I do this, I love this. Upper administration must build relationship with O E A and teachers in general. If this doesn't happen, nothing else you try is going to work. From a parent perspective, I worry about class size and ensuring students with I E Ps are served well in this staffing crisis. Specifically, my concern is how are you gonna cover classes, like for resource specifically? I applaud you for having master social workers, and it's amazing, and kids needs more, as the number of M S Ws are not able to address every student struggling with socially and emotional behavioral health concerns. Meeting all kids' emotional needs is imperative-
One minute.
-and the foundation on which all academic success is built. In conclusion, there's so much to do. It all starts with building trusting relationships. Relationships between students and teachers, teachers and administrators, between building administrators and central office administrators, and all those combinations together. O P S must listen to those serving students and families, serving students, teachers, and families, and those who know the building culture and community.
Thirty seconds.
Board, this is your responsibility, and you must direct those in charge to do this hard work. It is the right thing to do for both students and teachers. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And for the record, we began public comment at six forty P M. Next to the podium, we have Marlon Harrison. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marlon Harrison, M A R L O N Harrison, and I live at ninety-five twenty-four Blondo Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three four. And, can y'all hear me okay? Okay, so, I, I don't like, so I wanna talk to you guys about this STEM, and where, I, I don't, and I don't mind a stimulus thing, but I feel like for me, that music, that money, that money should go to someplace, some stuff, someplace else. Right now, it is four thousand five hundred for full-time and two, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for part-time. And unfortunately, I feel like that money should go to more, for student needs, such as anger management, behavior, or mental health. As somebody who works in education, I could tell you firsthand that the anger management and emotional and behavioral health has been out of control this past year, from teach, students hitting teachers, to kids having episodes and destroying classrooms. And a lot of times, I feel like those kids' needs are not getting met in the schools. And I know, I have talked to some of my other colleagues at other schools, and they said they don't have full-time, like, social workers or psychologists in the schools. And I feel like we need to invest more psychologists and more social workers in those schools. Also, I feel like we need to invest in, like, helping parents find, like, counselors or therapists for kids who have, who need help, because, like I said, I have experienced kids who have mental breakdowns almost every single day, and it's very emotional. And also, not just invest in, like, therapy for the kids, but also therapy for our staff, because the stuff that we go through every day with these kids, we need counseling, and we need help, and we need somebody to talk to every day, every day, and stuff. So I, in my opinion, I feel like, yes, that money is good for the teachers, but let's also invest in finding help for these kids, especially kids with emotional and mental health needs. And also, let's start investing in more programs that get these kids, like, emotional anger management's under control, because these kids can't go out into the real world acting like the way they do now in schools, because it's not gonna work in the real world, because they will get arrested, people will, you know, turn them away, and stuff like that. So that's all I gotta say. Thank you very much.
Next tonight, we have Robert Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Miller, that's R O B E R T M I L L E R, and I reside at seventy-three oh one North Hundred Seventh Avenue in Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one two two. Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Superintendent Logan, and members of the Board. My name is Robert Miller, and I am the President of the Omaha Education Association. First, I would like to publicly thank Ms. Juarez and the South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance for acknowledging the Omaha Public Schools teachers for the work that they've done over the year during an unprecedented time. It has been a challenging, but the educators continue to do what was best for students and their communities. So thank you, Ms. Juarez. Secondly, the announcement of the stipend last week makes it appear that there were strings attached to it, which was brought additional concerns from our members. I'd like to share some of the thoughts on the proposed stipend as the B O E is set to consider this evening, as they amend the E S R plan. Here are just a few. Members are wondering what strings may be attached to the stipend, such as expectations to work additional hours, larger class sizes, or take on more coverages. That it is a Band-Aid approach in solving the real issue. The district will be faced with staff shortages, yes. The stipend may be nice, but these are needs, but there needs to be a concrete plan in place to deal with issues impacting the classroom. How will the stipend affect future salary negotiations? What about those who retired this year? What is happening to keep everyone safe from outside factors and student aggression? It should not be an excuse to not more work on the educators. Over the, over the course of the last two years, O E A has offered a variety of solutions to the problems being faced in our buildings. Meetings were held and solutions were provided, and while we waited the district to let us know what was being considered, there appeared to be no immediate reaction or sense of urgency to address the concerns that were shared. Teachers are problem solvers. When a problem is faced, teachers find a way to solve the issue. Sadly, they were not taken into consideration. Some of our issues could have been addressed earlier. We were told that the use of E S R funds could not be used for the solutions given. However, other districts were able to use funds in the same manner. We applaud the district for the program to pay student teachers and the ability to retain them for the upcoming school year. As well as increasing summer school pay was another must-do for the district, and again, we applaud the district for making that change. And I hope it continues to show the value of what the staff do in the next level learning. The district must continue to be, to compensate fairly for the work they value from their employees. Finally, it is our ask that this board seriously takes into consideration the M O U that the O E A has provided to the district leadership to address some concerns we see happening in the next school year. From compensation on class coverage, and teaching a hybrid class to identify planned time for all employees. As the district rolls out new ideas, curriculum, and initiatives, teachers need to have the time to plan accordingly and implement what was learned in those P Ds. Having staff attend the P D and then expect them to dive deeper outside the contract hour is unsustainable and unprofessional ask. This board has expressed their appreciation to the staff of O P S many times, if not at every meeting publicly. We appreciate that. The district has moved in the right direction to address the heavy lifting that has been, and will be needed in the current, in the coming year, but-
One minute.
-more must be considered. O E A looks forward to the opportunity to work with the district to address the concerns being faced in the many classrooms of O P S. It is time to act on the concerns we have brought forward, and we look forward to hearing from you, from your stance on the M O U that was been proposed to the district. Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy Poehling.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, Kathy Poehling, P O E H L I N G. My address is eighty-one thirty-five South Fiftyth Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. And I just, I just want to clarify that I'm gonna be talking about class size, but it's not because I think that it's tied to E S R funding, it's because we have a shortage of teachers, and we are in crisis, and we know our classrooms are gonna be bigger next year. We know we're gonna have combination classrooms next year, and that's why I'm speaking to this. If you ask a parent if they would rather have their child in a classroom that has fifteen or twenty-five students, parents will answer fifteen. Parents want teachers to be able to engage students in their learning and provide individual instruction when needed. Teachers also want to be able to address the needs of their students and provide them with small group instruction when needed. This is difficult to do when class sizes are too large. If elementary teachers have twenty to thirty-five students in a class, it's not easy to build relationships or address the individual needs of our students. We know that with the number of teachers that resigned or retired from Omaha Public Schools this year, our classes will be changing next year. Classrooms will be increasing in size. A C P classrooms are closing and mainstreaming those students who need even more support, and teacher workload will be increasing astronomically. If in any of our classrooms, students with differences are added, students with learning and reading disabilities, students who have behavioral and emotional needs, students who are gifted and talented, English language learners, or students who have medical needs, the job of a teacher is compounded in ways that affect how they will reach all the students in their classes. Students with this, differences can be disruptive in class if they don't get the assistance they require, and this can be difficult for all of the students. How will these teachers and students be supported in their classroom next year? We have already had many of our support personnel leave for higher-paying jobs. Will special education be able to properly support students when they have higher caseloads? Are we looking at another great resignation next year because teachers can no longer stay healthy and safe in their classrooms? One of the earliest influential meta-studies done on class size was by Glass and Smith, and showed that once class size fell below fifteen, learning increased progressively as the class size became smaller. The most prominent study supporting smaller class sizes was the Tennessee Star, which showed that students in smaller classes performed substantially better by the end of second, second grade, and had fewer disciplinary referrals. These students continued to be followed into adulthood, and it was shown they were more likely to go to college and get a degree in the STEM field, which is much needed. The positive effect was twice as large for poor and minority students. It was also noted by others that class size reduction most benefits minority and disadvantaged students, and would narrow the racial achievement gap by about one-third. Further studies showed that smaller class size increased engagement, lowered dropout rates-
One minute.
-and better non-cognitive skills. One study showed that smaller class sizes in eighth grade led to improvements in persistence and self-esteem. In addition, some studies pointed to lower teacher attrition rates when class sizes are reduced, which would likely lead to a more experienced and effective teaching force. O P S is in a crisis. The teacher shortage will not just increase class size, but-
Thirty seconds.
...will increase the number of students with needs in our classrooms. O P S needs to show that they care about their staff and their students. Pro-COM has given the district several ideas to improve the working conditions and learning conditions of our schools, but they've put off making these changes until it was too late. We, as a district, need to be, do better for our staff that have remained in our schools throughout the last few years, and for the students who deserve-
Thank you. Next tonight, we have Kathy Skurlock. Hello?
Hello. Good evening, Board, Dr. Logan, Dr. Holman. Kathy Skurlock, C A T H Y S C U R L O C K. I live at eighty-one twenty-nine Potter Street, six eight one two two. First, thank you for considering, evaluating, and looking at the E S R funds again in order to provide the stipend that was mentioned last week. I would like to state, though, that a stipend to show appreciation and to retain teachers should have been given already this year, especially after the last two years that teachers and school personnel have had to adjust, be flexible, and step up to go above and beyond for our students. Perhaps giving a retention stipend, or announcing it when you announced this student-teacher, cooperating teacher stipends would have been the right thing to do. You just said in your opening remarks that you wanted to recognize the work of current and returning teachers, and to show appreciation for the work that we have been doing. So why wait until September first to disperse the stipend? Why not disperse it as soon as it is approved? But stipend aside, a huge issue that needs to be addressed, and already has been and is gonna continue to be addressed, I believe, tonight, is, in order to retain and attract quality teachers to O P S, is class sizes. I have seen class sizes slowly increase the past few years, and with the current shortage and expected growth next year. It is one of the reasons that I decided to step away from the- This is my second time speaking in front of you guys, and I thought tonight I'd do a lot better. Okay, give me a moment. All right. One of the reasons I decided to step away from the Spanish classroom that I love, in order to work in a smaller program. I made the decision for my own personal health and well-being, but also for my students. I made, sorry, and I didn't bring my readers either, so. I made the decision for my own personal health and well-being, but also for my students. The stress of larger class sizes that made it difficult to adequately address student behaviors and connect with my students, which is one way to reduce student behavior, is by building relationships with students. In addition to the issue of coverage and overages this year, was a huge strain on me physically and mentally. For me to once again be the teacher I need to be for my students, and that I want to be for my students, I made the decision to step back some. I hope that the issue of teacher shortage can be addressed so that I can continue to share my passion with my students. But to be fair to them and myself, I had to make the decision to step back, in hopes that adequate and appropriate solutions can be found to address the teacher shortage and class sizes. Although the stipend is welcomed and appreciated, it is just one of many things that needs to happen in order to be able to retain and attract great teachers to our district. O E A has presented some solutions that I hope the Board will look at seriously and consider. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have John Kunkel.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's John Kunkel, K U N K E L. I live at fifty-one twenty-seven Pratt Street in Omaha, six eight one oh four. I came here tonight to talk about some issues with busing, as I work for Student Transportation of America, and I'm sure you're all aware of the crisis we have with the busing situation, and routes not being covered, as of, I think, recently, there's fifty-eight routes that were uncovered. And I just wanted to give our perspective as drivers to the situation, and me as one of many examples. You could pick any one of a dozen people, and we're all doing multiple routes. But what, what troubles me is the punitive approach to the contract that I seem to have come across here. It's under liquidated damages and missed service charges. I'll give you an example of a recent week where I worked, where, starting at the year, I had one elementary school and one middle school, and then one late run, twice a day for the schools, and that amounted to five runs. In one particular week, I did three elementary schools, two middle schools, and three late runs, a total of thirteen routes. And I did them all within the assigned times, got everybody to school on time, which I thought was a pretty good accomplishment. But in any case, it's not just me. All of us are doing those sorts of things. But in the liquidated damages and service charges, under the amendment, what is it, attachment one, page twenty-six, turns out that- turns out that it says here that on doubled routes, districts shall only be charged one route. The other route will be considered a missed trip. Now, the penalty for missed trips is the STA gets charged back one and a half times what they're normally paid for that route. Not only they're not getting paid for the route, but they're charged a fine of one and a half times that amount. So in effect, that week where I did three routes instead of my normal one and for the elementary and I think it was a total of eight routes or something like that. So those eight routes extra that I did at no extra pay for me, just out of concern for the students. STA was charged, you know, I don't know, somewhere in this amount of money. I don't know the particular amount, but it seems backwards to me. We need to find a solution to this situation where where it makes it, it ratchets down the pressure on everyone, not up, you know? And I appreciate what you guys were saying earlier, too, because the students, you know, they need that security and that stability in the classroom, but also they need it on the bus, too. They get off of school, they want to blow off their steam. And they need to be sure that the bus is going to be there, you know? Otherwise, the uncertainty just adds to their situation that they're experiencing in school, at home, and in life and things like that. But, but, and that kind of leads me to another thing that what's it called? There's a word for it, the stipends, Esser or something? I'm not familiar with it that much, but I'm wondering how that affects us as working for the school district but not officially the school district, working for a contractor for the school district. I mean, we put in long hours. I mean, I average seven and a half hours a day doing these multiple routes. And that's, that's pretty heavy, hard halftime work, you know, part-time.
One minute.
And so I'm wondering, is there any allocation for contractual employees like us to be compensated for the extra work that we're doing as well? And it doesn't seem like it. And it seems like the company, I have no direct, you know, affiliation with the company other than working for them, is being penalized instead of giving some kind of support in that situation, but.
Thirty seconds.
And the other thing I would just like briefly to touch on is, you know, the talk about class sizes, I hadn't meant to talk about this, but it's the same with bus sizes, you know? You get a lot of kids together and you try to get their cooperation and understanding and the safety and all the issues. And it's hard. And if they're coming out, it all just, it's an aggregate of all these things for these kids. I'd like to see some kind of restorative justice for the kids.
Next at the podium, we have Jettie Davis.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jettie Davis. I live at ninety-three fifty-four Miami Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-four.
Ma'am, would you spell your name as well?
Jettie, J.E.T.T.I.E. And I'm also a contracted bus driver for Student Transportation of America. And I've been driving for thirteen years. I enjoy my job. And if you don't love children, you shouldn't drive a bus. Because out of every four, you're going to have one that you're going to be challenged with. But my concern is that I want to use one word is devalue as a bus driver. Burnout as a bus driver. It's almost as if I'm in the middle. Because based on the contract, it indicates that student transportation has an obligation to make sure that they meet their first route on time. That second route, if they don't, is a missed route. And OPS is only going to pay for that first route. So I'm driving three or four routes. So all of those other routes outside of one-twenty-three, which is my route, I'm not compensated for it. If STA has to go back, what they call go back, STA is responsible for paying for that route, not OPS. So my concern is, where do I fit in? Who's compensating me for going back or meeting, missing that second route? I'm not compensated. I'm getting burnt out. I, why do I drive these routes? Because I love children. Money is not everything. I get more gratification out of seeing that child get an education. But I'm worried about burnout. That's my concern today. Who's going to compensate me to keep me from giving up and just saying, I can't do it no more? Because this upcoming year, I don't know if I can handle that. So it's, it's, I know I'm going to keep on driving. I'll be there. Somehow, some way, I'll be there. But I just want to, to broach that to you. I'm not really, I don't know who is responsible for meeting that demand or concern, I want to say. But that's just my, that's just my part today. And I hope you all are not bored. Thank you so much.
Okay, next tonight, we have Amy Noel.
Greetings. Hello. Can you guys hear me okay? Does it echo? Okay. My name is Amy Noel, A-I-M-E-E-N-O-E-L. I live at four-three-two-seven North one-hundred-and-seventy-fourth Ave, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-one-six. First off, I want to share a couple of things that I'm proud of in being part of this district. Our district, a while ago, took the initiative to recognize legally married same-sex couples, even though at that time, the state of Nebraska did not. It gave me the ability to take care of my spouse by having her put on my health insurance. It made me finally feel like a first-class citizen. Also, Dr. Logan, you took the lead when the pandemic initially began. Your decisions helped to keep our students, staff, and community safe. That is true leadership. And I appreciate and respect you for your actions. My role in the district. I have been a physical educator for OPS for twenty-eight years. Along with that, at times I have been a cooperating teacher and I have worked on our middle school physical education curriculum development when I taught at Beveridge. I have been OPS, Suma Haffey, Dwayne Hayes, Dr. Rick Workheiser, and Kara Riggs. The one thing these all, all these individuals in their vision. Speaking of passion, for those of you who have never been or not recently been in the trenches of teaching, it has changed. Some changes for the better, but others not so. Before the pandemic, there was an undercurrent of issues that needed to be addressed, not just in our district, but nationwide. Once the pandemic hit, these issues became exposed with disruptive student behavior being one of them. This behavior issue has now suffocated and hampered the educational environment for all our students and our staff. This is also a big reason we see our staff are leaving our district. This was stated in Sunday's Omaha World Herald when Doug Kagan, the president of Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom, shared that teachers tell his group they are leaving because of student discipline problems and an indifference by administrators. I think we have shortchanged our students and their ability to overcome challenges, learn from them, and become resilient. Our students are smart and intuitive. And they continue the disruptive behavior due to the lack of consequences. We need to hold them to a higher level of accountability and behavioral expectations. Surprisingly, I think they will respect us more in the end. So what do we do? I believe in this district. If I didn't, I would have left because I would not be good for the students and I would not be good for myself. We have a couple of choices. One, we can continue down this path of depletion of teachers and support staff by doing the same things the same way. Or we could quit putting Band-Aids on the symptoms and start making real changes. This in turn could replenish our teachers and support staff.
One minute.
And who knows, maybe others would want to come and join our district because they believe strongly in our vision. I am an optimist, but I am a realist, too. I think we can make the real changes, but it takes transparent and collaborative approach by all of us. This will certainly be hard work, but I think it can be done. In closing, if we really want to make changes happen, we need those who are making the decisions to come work with us in the trenches. Not just helping out in the office or the cafeteria, not just subbing one day here or there, once or twice a week, but come engage with us in our classroom for a week or so. Then maybe real changes could start to occur. Instead of teachers and support staff just surviving, we could start thriving again. Thank you.
Next tonight, we have Michelle Settlemeyer.
Good evening.
Good evening. Michelle Settlemeyer, one-nine-six-nine-four Concord Loop, Council West Iowa, five-one-five-zero-three. S.E.T.T.L.E.M.Y.E.R. I speak to you tonight as the president-elect of the Omaha Education Association and a twenty-four-year veteran of Omaha Public Schools. Well, here we are. You, as a board, have been informed on multiple occasions by many voices over the last few years of what many of your employees feel like a runaway train. The present moment feels like a derailment with a stipend to address potentially catastrophic results. The stipend only addresses one problem, a financial one. It does not address the past, current, and future working conditions, including larger class sizes in the same rooms, staffing shortages, more combined grade-level elementary classes, and an increasing special education population, and an impact of all of this on student and staff safety. I get the feeling that the Board believes that all of this is only pointed out at public comment. That is a false assumption. There have been, also have been regular and multiple meetings with the district via professional committee and our contract, per our contract provisions, and the district has not taken it seriously. Our representatives elected and our organizational specialists regularly brought all the issues that brought this crisis and were not taken seriously. Parents and community members have repeatedly asked for the district's attention, expressed their concerns, and were not taken seriously. It is not my intent to rant to you from a microphone twice a month, not at all. But the only way to avoid this isn't to engage with your employees in a manner that embraces the ideal that we understand the issues. We don't need a consultant to interpret them for you or us, and we have real ideas for solutions. I hope and believe that you want to move in a new direction, Mr. Teal and others, I know I do. You must take your staff and constituents seriously instead of only listening to hired consultants and what the district leaders want you to know. It is a time to dare down the walls that have blocked communication and information and demand transparency. But that is your work. We have been trying to do that work for a while. So please, change this pattern. If we come to public comment, know that it's a last resort. We are not here for fun. We are not unhinged or an alarmist. We are just being real with you. When your staff is problem-solving in public, you have to ask why. It is because we need you to listen. Teachers are not mad at their principals. In fact, a majority of building leadership has a very positive relationship with their staffs and feel valued and appreciated at the building level. However, if you were to look at those same teachers at the district level, data shows an entirely different story. Seven out of ten teachers don't feel seen, valued, or appreciated by the district. And it's not primarily about money. Know that we are saddened and scared by the degradation of the system, afraid that your focus has been on the next well-marketed, bright, shiny idea at the expense of what is really going on and the kind of grassroots energy that it will take to solve these problems. To many people, to many people are saying it is now too late. I cannot and do not believe that. But I do know how this is going to hit every teacher, every classroom, and every kid next year. I know it in my bones. I've been there. Tonight, you should hear from, hear of at least nine solutions the OEA presented to the district via memorandums of understanding that highlight what will happen next year in the classrooms. We did this before the forty-five-hundred-dollar stipend hardship and retention idea was proposed. Listen to their implications. They are very real. Don't let anyone tell you that we are being alarmist. You should clearly see we are not and were never, and never were. Thank you.
Next, we have Megan Hartfield.
Hey, Megan.
Hi. Hi, my name is Megan Hartfield, M.E.E.G.H.A.N. H.A.R.T.F.I.E.L.D., and I reside at one-eight-eight-zero-four Birch Ave, Omaha. I am speaking as Molly Davies, member of the OEA Board, negotiator of the bargaining unit that represents teachers, counselors, department heads, curriculum specialists, specialists, lead teachers, and nurses. She has currently lost her voice. Others have been and will be expressing their view of the timing and the amount of the proposed stipend, so I won't waste time adding my perspective. Rather, I am concerned with how this proposed stipend affects compensation and teaching and learning conditions for our bargaining unit and the rest of the staff of the Omaha Public Schools. It occurs to me that in two years, we will be potentially, potentially be bargaining with some new board members and maybe some new district leadership. To imagine how this stipend impacts compensation conceptually, I am mentally adding four-thousand-five-hundred dollars to every cell in our salary schedule. We know that heading in to a new bargaining year in the fall that we are likely at the bottom of our array. When we fight like heck to get to the least that we can demand statutorily every time we bargain, two years later, that is just the way it is. It will be interesting to see what this adjustment does to the placement in that array. And I can't say that hurts my feelings, but I can say that I'm curious as to what the proposal is for year three. This seems to set us up for a fiscal cliff. Last time I dug into the district's five-year budget projections, the amount budgeted for increases in compensation for our bargaining unit just hit the least we could demand for last year and the coming academic year, which is where we ended up settling, as that was a two-year, nearly ten percent increase to salaries. We have fewer teachers, a small reduction to our student population, and we will see how that plays out next year. When we need to bargain for year three and the Esser's money is gone, what is the plan? This leaves me with questions. One, what is happening with the money that was budgeted for last year for employee compensation and benefits that was not paid out as subs were not paid at the same volume? And what about next year as we will have hundreds of fewer employees in our bargaining unit? Two, is the district willing to assure us that offering these stipends for the next two years does not abrogate the obligation to bargain? There are serious adjustments that have to be made to our extra duty pay and to our teaching and learning conditions that affect, that these stipends will not address. We don't like having to do all that work during negotiations, but we are not the ones resisting a more collaborative, collective bargaining approach to work for the common good. We will be busy starting the new school year and we will not have the time to argue whether or not bargaining is necessary. It is. Three, is the district willing to work with the OEA to make a sustainability plan for compensation over the next five years to avoid the fiscal cliff that this stipend sets up? In order for our bargaining unit not to experience a loss of compensation, the district would need to plan to put five thousand dollars on the base that third year or do a would need to plan to put $5,000 on the base that third year or do a creative overhaul of our compensation, and that could be done together, not dropped on the table in the form of a red-line contract two years down the road. Four, as our incoming president detailed, we propose compensation remedies connected to actual increased work for members of our bargaining unit. We appreciate that the stipend being offered is all-inclusive as we stand in solidarity with the other bargaining units and the reality that they deserve more pay, but it won't solve the issues posed by these remedies, and they still need to be considered and negotiated. Five, additionally, we question awarding the $4,500 stipends to executives above the principalship level in the organizational chart. We don't question that they work hard. We question whether the staffing crisis hits them the same way. I am the last person who is going to suggest that compensation does not matter or that our educators and every human that works in a school is an educator deserves this money.
One minute.
I just think it is much more complicated that it is being introduced as being, and I want some guarantee that the board understands it's not a solution. It's barely an incentive for teachers who are maxed out due to teaching and learning conditions and already stressed about next year and now worrying about getting a mandatory reassignment call from HR. We have a lot of work to do to address this crisis, and whether you like it or not, that work must be collaborative. If this stipend resets our relationship and makes space to do that, I am all for it and will show up. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Steve Denenberg.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Denenberg, S-T-E-V-E-D-E-N-E-N-B-E-R-G, 656 North 56th Street. I'm a surgeon. My children attend OPS. Please vote against extending the superintendent's contract. Let me describe a current real OPS student, a young girl who has chronic mental health problems, including major depressive disorder. She is under the care of a psychiatrist. She enters Burke High School as a freshman, and with the intensive help of her mother and doctor, she does well. She develops relationships with friends, teachers, and coaches, and has extracurricular activities. She is now surrounded by a crucial support system. Then she is told that she must move to Westview for sophomore year. Mother writes emails explaining the situation, asking for her to remain at Burke, attaching a letter from the psychiatrist who said the move was definitely not in the child's best interests, that extracting her from her current environment would exacerbate her mental health conditions and harm her overall health. Mom told me about her conversation with Dr. Logan, who refused to even address her concerns or the doctor's letter. Mom hung up after mom said, "Guess I'll have to apply formally for a transfer to Burke." And Dr. Logan responded, "Good luck with that." Her transfer request was denied, of course. I spoke with several families in similar situations. A mother said, "Dr. Logan told me that my psychiatrist's letter wasn't, quote, 'good enough.'" She said, quote, "I hold the exact same doctorate degree as Dr. Logan, and I would never dictate what's best for a student's mental health." A psychiatrist echoed that thought, quote, "The superintendent isn't qualified to make decisions on what is and is not best for an individual's mental health." The families were denied an appeal. Some of the children have already started to decompensate. One is having panic attacks. Another may need medication. One mother is considering moving closer to Burke to protect her child. Two moms brought up the subject of suicide to me. One said, quote, "If any mental health crisis happens, I'm going to sue them." This is the easy stuff, where there's a diagnosis and a therapist's letter. The hard stuff is to find and care for students who need a therapist but can't afford one. But Dr. Logan isn't handling even the easy stuff. Six of these families have already filed complaints with the Office for Civil Rights as a violation of the Disabilities Act. Their children have documented mental disabilities that are not being adequately addressed. A retired psychologist told me, "Oh, boy. If I were in administration, I'd do everything in my power to keep the OCR out of the district." There's more. These students' conditions are worsening, but Dr. Logan and the administration have accepted transfers of incoming sophomores to Burke from districts outside of OPS. If I were the psychiatrist, I would say to Dr. Logan, "Who are you to tell me that I don't understand this child's condition and needs as well as you? This child that you have never even met? This child that I've cared for for years and nursed through her freshman year? How do you like to hear him say that on the witness stand? Good luck with that." Listen carefully. You have now been put on notice quite publicly about your superintendent's actions. What does that mean? It means that if you don't act, if you don't wrest control of student placement away from Dr. Logan, then if, God forbid, a child does harm herself, you will be as culpable as the superintendent and deservedly so. Please do not reward this person with a contract extension. Thank you for your time.
Thirty seconds. Next, we have Rachel Benzoni.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Benzoni. My address is 10901 Janes Plaza, Zip Code 68164. I am here as a constituent.
Would you spell your name, please?
B-E-N-Z-O-N-I. I am representing myself and myself alone. I worked for the school district for seven years. I returned to OPS this year because I believed in what we were doing and because I missed the kids. However, as of June 1st, I am now a former OPS teacher. In August, I witnessed my fellow teachers being misled about how ESRS funds can be spent, and before my statements are labeled as misinformation, I was a legislative aide to a member of Congress when the American Rescue Plan was passed. I am likely more familiar than most as to what is and what is not allowable use of funds based on my experience in working with state and local educational agencies to interpret the statute. I caution you against too much self-congratulation regarding this stipend. It is not being given to teachers who risked their lives to teach in person during the pandemic in 2020, nor to those who carry their students' trauma in 2021. Making these stipends contingent on staying with the district for two more years does not consider the work done this year or last. Were you serious about retaining experienced teachers, attracting new teachers, or inspiring our students to return as teachers in this district? You would not be looking to short-term solutions for systemic problems. To some extent, this loyalty bonus may temporarily slow down the exodus, but the exodus will continue to happen without long-term solutions which are focused on students and teachers and not on what gets you re-elected in November. It is close to financial abuse of your employees. It is difficult to constructively engage with board members prior to a meeting when an item that is up for discussion is announced in an afternoon press conference at the very end of the school year, literal days before the next board meeting. Ms. Cassidy, I heard your earlier statement, and I know that when we speak in anger, we often make the best speech that we will always regret. I understand. I share your frustration, but from a different perspective. My work this year, supporting my students and my colleagues in their second year of COVID, and the work of our dedicated support staff, will not be recognized in this proposed use of ESRS funding. I can agree, however, that if your underlying goal is not what is doing what's best for the kids, it might be time for you to find a new position, plain and simple.
Excuse me. Next, we have Sasha Denenberg.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sasha Denenberg, S-A-S-H-A-D-E-N-E-N-B-E-R-G. Please do not grant Dr. Logan a contract extension. The district is much worse off than it was a couple years ago. It is absolutely time for new leadership, not for cementing the old in place. From the information I have, just last Friday, Dr. Logan's administration ordered the high schools to redo all of their classes, making a minimum class size of 35, and to make the leftover teachers available to be transferred to other schools. People who teach children understand that new class sizes will destroy education. Grossly overcrowded classes will also worsen behavioral problems and increase security concerns. These instructions will also cause a new wave of teacher resignations or retirements. When you have classes of 35 and no extra teachers in the building, and some teachers resign, and now you don't really have a teaching institution at all. This is a true emergency. There are some changes that must be made immediately or the schools will fail. One, Westview High School must not open this fall. Those teachers must be redistributed to the other schools. Two, all pathway programs and classes must be canceled. The worthless freshman seminar class, which I attended, does not deserve a valuable teacher. Neither do the sophomore-year classes that were written only to fill out the pathways programs. Three, nonessential staff with teaching certificates must be put back into the classroom. Instructional coaches and facilitators must be teaching classes for which they are certified. Staff at the TAC Building who are not absolutely essential can be reassigned to teach full-time. Four, I think Dr. Logan must go. To make this work, the remaining teachers, under incredible stress, must feel that their superintendent listens to them and is on their side. We are in this position in great part because teachers fear retaliation if they speak out against Dr. Logan's plans or actions. That feeling is widespread in the district and definitely contributed to the 700 teacher loss this spring. Dr. Logan pushed the pathways program onto the district. It was a $22 million waste of money and a waste of student time when students needed help catching up in core subjects. Whatever happened to focusing on academics? What else? Dr. Logan sneaked out to Virginia to apply for the job of superintendent in a huge school district there. She even made it to the final two candidates, all the while keeping her intentions secret from her constituents. Do not give her more chances to try that again. The district is in true crisis, and we need different leadership right now. Please do not extend her contract. Thank you so much for your attention.
Okay, that is the end of public comment. Moving on now to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved. Second.
By Mr. Teal and second by Mr. Snow. I will be abstaining. Mrs. Cassidy will be abstaining.
Yes, I will also be.
From Claims Report C. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Teal.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to action items. Item I-1A, approval of the proposed amendment to the plan for expenditure of $280,841,096 allocated to the district by the Nebraska Department of Education from the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, also known as ESRS II Fund, and the ESRS III Fund, which was previously approved by the Board of Education on September 9, 2021. And tonight, we have Mr. Wakefield here with us.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, Dr. Logan. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the time tonight to talk to you about the proposed amendment for the ESRS plan, which was originally approved by the Board of Education on September 9, 2021. Since that time, guidance on allowable uses have been expanded, and the board supported an amendment to the ESRS plan on March 7, 2022 to create programs to support teacher development and a pipeline of teachers. We are here again today to ask your approval to seek an additional amendment to further the use of our ESRS funds to support our staff, all staff. These supports for the 2022-23 and for the 2022-2023, I apologize, and the 2023-2024 school year will include a retention stipend, as has been already mentioned, of $4,500 for full-time staff over the course of two years, so $9,000 total over two years. That stipend will be paid out in three increments, September 1st, December 1st, and May 15th for staff. Part-time staff working scheduled for 20 hours or more a week would receive half that amount of $2,250. Additionally, pending board approval and negotiation with our bargaining units, the administration is asking the board to approve $5.2 million for teacher home visits to compensate teachers who do home visits outside the school day as they work with relationships building with students and working with families to address behavior issues, social, emotional issues, attendance issues, and of course, always academic issues. Additionally, administration is seeking board approval to add hybrid class instruction for about a quarter million dollars a year estimated. Hybrid class instruction is something new and something in working with the Omaha Education Association, we would be adding pending their agreement. This is a situation where a teacher who is asked to teach in person and virtually at the same time for an entire semester would be compensated. We see situations like this happening in classes like Spanish IV. I'll use an example Dr. Logan uses with me all the time, where we may not have enough students who have a full class at one high school, may not have enough students to have a full class at another high school, but we combine those two into one class with some virtual instruction, much like distance learning that some of us old farm boys might remember from the farm, where we're using our teachers effectively to do that. And finally, loss of planned time. The administration is seeking approval to amend ESRS to include $5 million for loss of planned time with the proposal of pending negotiations with our teachers' union, moving loss of planned pay from $30 per hour to $50 per hour. These are being asked to support our teachers, to support our staff, and support the staff who support our teachers so we can best utilize them in working with our students. To do this, we will have to amend our ESRS amendment. The money does have to come from somewhere, and I will channel Scott Roberts for just a minute. We do have to balance the books. So we are proposing the following changes to our ESRS plan to balance those books. Our new spending initiatives total approximately $82.6 million. So we would request reducing internet connectivity in Pillar 1 by $9 million. This is not a change in service, not a reduction in coverage. Through competitive bidding, we were actually able to come in with a contract much lower than originally projected, and so this is just going back to what that new contract is going to be. We would recommend changing our technology refresh by reducing that by $10 million as well. The change, this change would reduce the iPad replacement cycle from, or increase the iPad replacement cycle from three years to four years as we work on replacing iPads. Additionally, reduced funds set aside or allocated for tutoring in Pillar 1 by $3.2 million. This money was determined as being excess due to the number of Title I schools that had Title I funding available for tutoring, so using that money more effectively. Reduction of curriculum adoptions by $3 million. Please note, the original allocation for curriculum adoptions was $24 million, so this leaves $21 million for curriculum adoptions as we move forward. A reduction in pluriwellness in Pillar 2 by $3 million. This would reduce coverage for initiatives in Pillar 2. And the reduction in infrastructure, I'm sorry, I had to pause for this one, infrastructure projects by $54.4 million. And again, as Dr. Logan mentioned early on, this would reduce some of the facilities work that we had planned with ESRS as we move forward. Today, what we're here to ask is to seek your approval to request an amendment to Nebraska Department of Education to our ESRS plans. Pending your approval and approval of that amendment, we would then work with our negotiated partners to come to agreement, offering these stipends and various other activities so that we can get those in place for August 2022. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield, for being here tonight. Colleagues?
Yes, I have a question, please.
Yes, I have a question, please.
Ms. Juarez.
I tried to get this clarified before, but could you explain to me, what does it mean by loss of planned time?
Teachers are guaranteed a certain number of planned minutes per week or per ten-day cycle, depending on their level. When we are short substitute teachers or have other activities, they occasionally lose that planned time, and we pay them per hour for that time, since they've lost that time to plan, and therefore end up planning after-hours or outside the school day.
Any other questions, colleagues? Mr. Head.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. Quick question on Pillar Two, the three-million dollars taken out of employee wellness. Can you explain where that's coming from? I guess it's just a little bit concerning to think that we're giving additional stipends, but we're taking it out of another bucket that's meant to help employees.
We are working with some of our local partners to look at some employee wellness programs. At this point, we don't have total final cost and what that may be, so as we work with our partners to address that. We still intend to address that, just looking at that differently, also looking at what support we can provide through other funds.
Thank you.
Vice President Erdnberger.
Just go ahead and go.
My first question... Is it okay? Thank you, Dr. Holman. My first question, the replacement cycle for iPads. Obviously, we probably picked three years for a reason the first time around, so what are the implications of moving to a four-year cycle?
I'm going to start by saying I am probably not the best person to answer that. They don't let me touch iPads. The... it does mean that we have older iPads in our inventory as we get through, so you're going to see more breakage, more issues with the older pads as they go through. Our IMS department does fully believe that a four-year replacement cycle is effective and appropriate as we move though.
Thank you.
In addition, we also have some iPads that were pre-existing, so that's part of the issue as well. So we'll have to adjust to make sure some of the older iPads that some schools already had are replaced first. For example, Norris and Mars were part of a Verizon grant, and their iPads are already a little older.
I would also, you know, recognize what Ms. Erdnberger said at the top of the meeting, which is that, though in my estimation, this is... this has no strings. This is not about class sizes, this is not about an ability to demand extra work. This is about recognizing our teachers and supporting them with money that is available. That said, I have... I think it's appropriate, given how they've been connected, at least in the minds of our constituents and our teachers, to ask some questions about that, but I will hold off on those questions until everybody has the opportunity to ask questions specifically regarding this plan.
Ms. Crackey.
My concern... my concern would be with going through this, and we're talking about the adoptions and what they might be, and we're talking about infrastructure, and then the comment is, we don't have the total cost yet. With that in mind, I can't support this until I know the total cost. That would be a very foolish thing for me to do.
And I'm sorry if I misspoke, Ms. Crackey. We don't have total cost on employee wellness initiatives. That's the only thing we don't have total cost on.
On the initiatives.
And that is as we're working with our community partners and with other funding sources potentially.
Well, then why is that included in this when we don't know yet? If you remove that from this, maybe I can support it, but if we don't know what that's going to be or look like, why would I vote on it?
And there is still funds left in Pillar Two for employee initiatives. This is just a reduction, not an elimination, as we... I'm sorry, employee wellness... this right here, Ms. Crackey? You can't see my pointer.
I'm looking at Pillar One.
That is a reduction, not an elimination of those funds, much like we reduce Pillar One and Pillar Three.
Coverage for initiatives. See, I haven't seen that before, so it's very... I'm looking at it and thinking, the total is a lot of money, and I don't think we're sure about the curriculum adoptions. Do we know for sure what we're doing in that? And we're saying we're reducing them, while we're buying a new series of something. How are we reducing it?
So we are reducing the curriculum adoption allocation from twenty-four million to twenty-one million. Through effective negotiations, we have lowered the price of many of our curriculum adoptions.
With those book companies, okay.
Yep.
That's good. And infrastructure is just something... I mean, that's a very large number, and dripping ceilings in on somebody's head is not a good idea, or puddles of buckets in the hall either. So when we're reducing that, where are we reducing and where? Norris was mentioned, maybe was that a reduction, Norris and Mars, or where is that going to happen, where we are going to reduce all that money?
And speaking as the operations guy, we had not fully allocated our infrastructure projects. Part of our work initially with ESRS was we hired a firm to do a full facilities assessment to identify our facilities' needs now and into the future. That firm is projected to finish that report by January... by December, two thousand and twenty-two, and that was supposed to identify most of that work. So a lot of the facilities money has not yet been allocated.
Okay, well, I'm receiving this as an information item tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you. Okay, I have a question. First of all, I agree with Mr. Tealyn and Vice President Erdnberger, that when this was presented to us, I think that we looked at it more as really just trying to help our staff in this economy. Gas prices going up, food prices going up, rent prices going up. I mean, it's not getting any better. So that's how I really viewed this, is just trying to give immediate relief to people, just to live and to feed our kids and to... I mean, I'm in the real world, this... I would love a stipend. So just clarified that that's how I took this when it was presented to us. So I do appreciate the restructuring to be able to try to make this happen for our staff. I'm fine with every pillar. Can you go back one slide? Okay. I'm just concerned with infrastructure. It's a large amount, and I know it states up there that we're going to reduce the cost. How... I know that we had a lot of things planned in infrastructure with this ESRS money, and how does this correlate with our facility study that we already did, which shows all of the things that are needed? And obviously, preventative maintenance is big with a lot of our buildings that are really old, particularly, I mean, most of my buildings in my district are really old. So I'm just kind of curious how we're going to tackle putting that off.
So the facility study is not complete yet. BCDM, the organization doing that for us, is about sixty percent done through their audit.
Okay.
And as mentioned, they are expected to be done and have a final report for the Board by December of two thousand and twenty-two, as we go forward. We have begun spending some of the ESRS facility money, limited amount on that, on some immediate infrastructure needs. The Board approved last month a chiller tower for Skinner.
Yeah.
And a chiller tower for McAllen, I believe, was approved tonight. So those are ESRS spends already. We have bids out for a variety of ESRS projects. This still does leave thirty-plus million and probably a little bit more.
That was my next question.
For facilities work, and we'll continue to allocate those dollars as we can across the district to meet the needs moving forward. Remember, the infrastructure projects under ESRS was supposed to focus on air quality, and we did address quite a bit of air quality with our bond. That's our HVAC systems, that's our boilers, that's our chillers, and those sort of items. So we did have a jumpstart on that as we move forward. We also spent some ESRS monies on custodial equipment to enhance our cleaning as we go forward, and again, something we'd already started prior to ESRS funds to kind of jumpstart that.
That clarifies it. That makes perfect sense, and I know that chiller... that's evident every time I walk into South, all the work that's being done on that boiler and chiller, so I appreciate it. That clarified completely. Thank you.
Vice President Erdnberger.
Thank you, President Holman. Just to sort of recap, then, on your first slide, you identified amounts that we are hoping to spend, and they add up to the dollar amount that's at the top of your second slide, which is eighty-two-point-six million. And so the question then becomes, where are we getting that eighty-two-point-six million? So to vote in support of what is largely the stipends, because that's seventy-two million dollars of the total, but in order to vote for this amendment to the ESRS Plan that largely provides for the stipends, but some other things as well, we had to go back into our plan and eliminate eighty-two million dollars. So what... I just wanted to kind of recap that the reductions that we have here are best efforts at seeing where there might have been some extra that we could pull out, so that we can come up with the eighty-two million dollars, eighty-two-point-six million dollars. And as Ms. Cassidy just pointed out, the largest amount is coming out of infrastructure, largely because we've already been able to cover a lot of it, also because we don't know how much it's going to cost anyway, since we won't get that report till the end of this year, and frankly, there may be other ways to cover those expenses. So my only point is, is that in order to get to supporting the stipends, we have to support these reductions, or come up with a better idea, which I immediately admit I do not have.
Very correct, Ms. Erdnberger.
Is that true?
There is a set number of ESRS dollars. I do want to say on infrastructure, one of the challenges we face is we have a timeframe, a window we must spend our funds in. And the current market for facilities work, lead times on mechanical products, labor, et cetera, make that extremely difficult within the timeframe. I wouldn't call any of these funds that are being reduced as extra, especially the operations guy.
Sorry. I'm sure you could have found something to spend it on. But in terms of what we need to do right now, this is a priority. I believe that that's, as we indicated, is a priority for us. To clarify, the loss of planned time money, does that reflect the payment that will be made on an hourly basis for loss of planned time? Is that what that number is?
The loss of planned time, the five million, would reflect our estimated costs for loss of planned time coverage if we paid it at fifty dollars an hour.
Okay.
Of course, that would vary year to year, but that's what we're projecting at this point.
Okay, and I did want to identify that, because I believe that's an increase. Is that right, over what we're paying at the moment?
Currently pay thirty dollars an hour, so that's a twenty-dollar-per-hour increase.
Okay, so that thirty is going to go to fifty, which I did want to point out. A couple other questions that were raised tonight. Somebody indicated, why don't we just, you know, give it to us as soon as possible, which of course, we would like to, but could you revisit for us why the first payment is not being made until September first?
Most importantly, we need a couple of yeses. One, starting with this Board to amend the plan. Second, from the Nebraska Department of Education to allow us to use the funds in that way. Those two yeses need to happen before we can do anything. We project we can get, assuming the Board's willing to approve this plan, approve our request for an amendment tonight, we project the Nebraska Department of Education will give us a yes by August.
Okay, thank you. Another comment that was made earlier, and I just want to clarify from my understanding, that this stipend is not contingent on staying for the next two years. The way it has been set up is, as you've got the dates here, nine-one, twelve-one, and five-fifteen in each of it. So if you have been working for the period of time preceding nine-one, and I know you showed it to us, I can't remember what it is, but basically, if you've been on board up through nine-one, you get the nine-one portion, right?
The stipend is divided in three equal payments each year, fifteen, 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 or seven-fifty, seven-fifty, seven-fifty. While we heard from certified staff tonight, it's important to recognize this also applies to classified staff, our paras, our custodians, our security guards. All staff that are extremely important to teachers, that support teachers, and we need them around teachers, they tend to work on a different cycle than teachers. They tend to come and go a little bit more throughout the year, they're not on a year-long contract. So dividing the stipend by three allows us to recognize them as they come on board. What we would hate to have happen is pay a forty-five-hundred-dollar stipend September first, hire a para who starts two weeks later and has to wait a full year to get it. While I know you can argue both sides of that, we want to recognize our employees who are working now with our students as we work through managing three years of disrupted learning.
Okay, yeah, and that... I agree with that, and I... but I did just want to clarify that it wasn't something that was only available to somebody that stuck around for the next two years. We anticipate a certain amount of rollover, particularly in the non-certified positions you just described, and want to be able to distribute funds accordingly. Another question that has been raised in my mind, and I think somebody raised it again tonight, is are we in a position to explain why we're doing this now, as opposed to earlier? And I don't know if you're that guy or not, but since you're standing there and have the microphone...
I'm good.
Oh, okay, thank you.
When we initially... I know that we had one speaker who talked about the guidance, and because we are participating in the Council of Great City Schools, and we have Manish, who is the legislative expert who works, works actually on the Hill and works with us, we get updated guidance, as does Dr. Holman get updated guidance as a part of the Council of Great City Schools, me on Thursdays and her on Fridays. In the original guidance, there was not... the monies for staff were... it was very murky about where it could be spent. In late of two thousand and twenty-one, there was additional guidance that was given, and actually encouragement by the Secretary of Education, Dr. Cardona, to provide updated... using money for stipends of all kinds. Student-teacher stipends weren't mentioned, but that was one of the routes that we went, for providing all kinds of opportunities for pipeline work. Then after that, there was recommendations and guidance from the Council of Great City Schools, who we do use their guidance quite a bit, on whether to go this... to-go routes of stipends, especially considering that we have a twenty percent minimum that we have to use for academic recovery. There is still... quite frankly, the guidance is still murky on whether or not these monies count towards academic recovery. However, we have certainly met the twenty percent for academic recovery, because many things count for that, curriculum adoptions, all of those kinds of things. Even some of the technology can, quite frankly, count for academic recovery. When we got later in the year, we felt this was the route to make a recommendation to the Board, looking at retention, looking at recognizing staff. We also thought that at the same time, we should think about some of the things as our outgoing and incoming OEA president indicated that were on the stipend, that were on the list, in addition to stipends, because I do believe that one of the recommendations did include stipends were on the list that was given to us from OEA. And one of those was coverage for planned time. There was a lot of discussion about behavior and ways that we can improve behavior. One of the levers that we know, and one of the things that we have experienced, is disconnection from our families, and that home visits can be helpful for teachers who want to do them. There will not be a requirement, but for that, teachers that want to do home visits along with another staff member, because nobody can go alone, social workers, bilingual liaisons, paraprofessionals who may want to go on home visits to deepen those connections with families. So we put the money there, because we know that we will get the benefit of that in the relationships and better behavior as we build those relationships with family. Lastly, the hybrid class instruction was another item that was on the list that we added, realizing that if we have fourteen or fifteen students in the district who want to take AP Physics, they're all over. We do have the opportunity to continue to add to teach AP Physics with one teacher assigned, and then students being able to log on to take AP Physics. So that was another item that was on the list that we wanted to make sure that we added altogether at one time in this amendment to include stipends. As you can see, the... As you can see, the list, the list there. In terms of employee wellness, one of the things that we are still waiting for is approval, because we did put wellness on our last ESRS amendment to provide gym, I think it was gym memberships, also an item that was on the list that was provided by OEA, and we still await the approval of that from the last ESRS amendment. We got conditional approval, but we are waiting, because one of the things that the NDE doesn't want to do is approve something and then have an issue with the state auditor. Although, again, that was on, those were things that were on the list and encouraged by the Secretary of Education. So I think it's important, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to speak now, to kind of clarify that many of those items are, were put on the list for the, that were, items that were up for consideration are on the list right now. And hopefully, if the board approves this, then we can move forward. If the employee wellness comes back as approved, it's certainly something we can move over, because we have that approved in a previous amendment. Does that help?
Thank you. That was much better than I expected. I am done for now, but I will get to class sizes.
Mr. Teeling?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so I think that, for me, if you have it, so the data that I'd like to see, or some discussion around how we expect classrooms to actually change based on the currently known staffing levels, how that compares to prior years, I can give you these one at a time, maybe. Why don't we start with that?
Thank you. I do need special attention sometimes. Four years ago, Dr. Logan, five years ago, we adjusted elementary class size.
And twenty, in 2019, we adjusted elementary class size.
That was me buying time to cough, thank you. We had previously had an academy system, so we had different class sizes for different schools. We found that that was no longer appropriate, so we went to a class size range of twenty to twenty-four for all of our elementary schools across the district. Knowing that we were not going to be able to fully staff all of our teachers this year, there's just not enough teachers out there, not enough teacher candidates in our colleges of education, nationwide problem, we began looking at alternatives. So we went back with a fine-tooth comb through our numbers on class sizes, and began looking at what it would do at the elementary level to take a class size cap at no more than twenty-eight. You are God sent, thank you. And in doing that, and I hesitate to use the phrase twenty-eight, because everyone automatically thinks every class is going to be twenty-eight. That is absolutely not true. This year that we just finished, our average class size was twenty-one point six across the district in elementary levels. Averages can be tricky, some are bigger, some are smaller, but most classes were right around that twenty to twenty-two mark, with classes reaching up to twenty-four, twenty-five in some cases. Going back through our numbers and looking at each school and classroom individually, with twenty-eight kind of being our cap, we're taking that elementary class size number right now to just over twenty-two students per classroom. Now, that doesn't mean every classroom gets twenty-two students, that means some get more, some get less, because class sizes are tricky. Our kids aren't equally divided among all our schools, and our teachers aren't equally divided among all our schools. We did, though, try to keep our primary grades, K-two, in that twenty to twenty-four range still, because that's so important to get a great start to school, looking at our older grades, raising those slightly. We did look at cases where we had larger class sizes, those twenty-eights and a few cases twenty-nines, and we put student teachers in those rooms, because we had outstanding teachers already in those rooms, and that's a second adult working with those kids. We also now, and the class size averages I'm giving you right now, are subject to change. Our students aren't done enrolling, HR's definitely not done hiring, they're out there beating the bushes every day, and we're working with principals. While we're really good at looking at the numbers and the math, and doing the averages, and figuring out where we think it should be, ultimately, that school knows best. That principal knows if a combination class, a four or five combo is better, or having a larger fifth grade is better, because they know the kids, we don't. That principal knows the strengths of our teachers. So working with each of those individual buildings, and that's what HR is doing right now, is calling principals and saying, hey, we're not going to be able to fill this, there's not teachers out there, how do we make this work? What non-classroom teachers do we have in our school that can support, what teachers can we do there? I also wanted to note that one of the things we've done in the past is tried to keep schools consistent. And while we would adjust teachers across the district at the elementary level occasionally throughout, if it was a three-section school and we had a very small third grade, we would leave them at a three-section, three classrooms a third grade, because we knew next year they'd have three sections again. This year, with having a teacher shortage, we began to pull some of that away. And so some of the class size changes you're seeing is a teacher may have gone from what was originally projected at sixteen or seventeen, because they had a small group of third graders, to more of that twenty-two to twenty-four, because we ended up shuffling a teacher someplace elsewhere. They were needed in that school primarily as we go forward. Secondary looks a little bit more difficult. We don't really talk class size so much in secondary cases, because class sizes-
Before we move on to secondary, so just, I think you addressed it a little bit, but can you just address the frequency, the number, the general number of classes that are reaching up past that average, right, in a significant way, that are, you know, adding four students getting up towards that twenty-eight?
The, yeah, the average is twenty-two, just over twenty-two. There's some decimal points there, there's always decimal points. The, most classes are ranging between that twenty and twenty-five range, twenty and twenty-six. We do have some classes in that twenty-eight, twenty-nine range, I think we have one or two that, at thirty, we're still talking to principals about, or putting a student-teacher there, or doing a variety of things. I would say that's probably less than ten percent of the classes are at that high of a range. Most classes are setting between that twenty to twenty-five range as we go forward.
I think that, the only other question I have is, I think most of the data that we saw was sort of, it was, I'm going to let you get to the secondary in a minute, but it was primary and secondary, but could you also speak to our special needs classes, ADB classes?
Special Ed.
Special Ed.
Yeah. Special Ed is a different function, and Special Ed has had a teacher shortage for many, many years as we continue to work that. HR, we, the district, are working with Special Ed to look at a variety of different solutions. We are looking at things like hiring part-time or retired teachers to come in and just do IEP work, to reduce the amount of paperwork a teacher has. We're looking at hiring office personnel at the secondary, whose entire job is data entry for IEPs, to reduce the workload on the teacher side of things. Special Ed has been doing weighted class, or weighted caseloads, excuse me, for the past couple of years. That has been optional in the last couple of years, they went to more of a mandatory. I will note that teachers await their own students, and in general, when teachers do that, we find teachers underweight their students. So we actually have to go back and have conversations with some teachers, is that really how you would wait that kid? And that sounds bad, but teachers believe the best in their kids all the time, and so recognizing some of that work as we go forward. We are looking at how we can better utilize paras with Special Ed, recognize that not only are we short teachers, we're short paras as well. So again, that stipend becomes very important to help us attract and retain highly qualified paras as we go. And I am the first to admit that we still paras and make them teachers. If they're close to becoming a teacher, we have a great parent-to-teacher program that we're constantly trying to grow paras into teachers.
Thank you. And then maybe just briefly on the secondary, just sort of generally.
Yeah. Secondary, middle school and high school, we really don't talk class size, we talk student-to-staff ratio, because classes are really based on what students need. So that band, that PE class, that show choir class is probably going to be larger, because they want a larger class for that. Algebra's going to be larger than physics or calculus. And so class sizes become a little bit more difficult, so we talk student-to-teacher ratio. And we also talk class caps, not a minimum, a maximum. Traditionally, we have scheduled, or allocated teachers at high schools at twenty-eight per class, teachers teaching three out of four classes or six out of eight, and at middle school, twenty-six per class. We raised those caps for that formula to thirty and thirty-five. Now, I don't want anyone to hear that that means every middle school and every high school class is going to be thirty or thirty-five. That's just what they, that's the maximum cap they can put in most classes, of course, excluding those PEs and bands and things we want more. When we redid that formula, it allowed us to say that we can put a certain number of positions on hold at each school, not that we're not going to try to hire them, but we're going to recognize we can't fill them, so let's build a schedule without them there, knowing that we can take class sizes a little bit bigger. And in our conversations with all the high schools and middle schools, which have happened Thursday and Friday of last week, where let's go back and look at the schedules, knowing that you can't fill these seven vacancies you have. So how do we rebuild that schedule? What do you need? You may now all of a sudden have too many math teachers and not enough science teachers, so let's, let's look at how we can help you and support you as we do that. We're also looking at secondary and how we use non-classroom teachers. Do we have our deans and our curriculum specialists and our ifs all teach a period a day? So they, they keep their feet in the teaching world, but still have time to do that dean and curriculum specialist and if work. And those are individual conversations with each building principal, and what's best suited to fit their need and their students' need. Because again, they know that school so much better than we do. I see numbers on paper, I know teachers' names, because I deal with teachers every day, I don't know students' names that well. And so letting our principals, helping our principals work through that, how can we, how can we adapt to this shortage? It's not what we want, but we do have to make sure every kid has a teacher in August when we start school.
Thank you.
Ms. Crackey?
In the proposal, I definitely want the teachers to get the stipend, and the paras are so important. At first, we weren't going to give the paras an increase, but this is really good, because they're so needed. I guess my concern is still the facility part of that, but there's a lot here to consider, and given to us all at one time, and are having the ability now to discuss it. The third grade was the cutoff part, the second grade, kindergarten, first grade. I want to tell you, the third grade is absolutely loaded, and it is almost double the work of what a second-grade teacher does, because I've done them both, and second grade can have a lot more in it than we are giving them. They should be doing some of the multiplication and division and learning those facts earlier, and then it would lessen the problem of what they're doing in third grade. But that is not on their schedule as I know it now. So there's some adjustment that I think will go a long way in helping everybody, and the children get so excited about getting into something else. So I think we really need to do that, and that'll help the teachers very much in the third grade and onward, certainly fourth and fifth, they still don't know it. So I mean, I'm really into crashing into that.
Yeah. The HR administrator who hires for elementary schools is actually a former kindergarten and first-grade teacher, and she is in my ear every day about the importance of kindergarten and first grade as well. It's something that we do pay attention to and try to work with principals on.
Vice President Erner Berger?
Thank you, President Holman. Again, to recap just for a second, make sure I understood, and also to make sure that we're all working with the same information. For what it's worth, I'm reminding you that last week, you sat down with as many of us individually as were available, and you went through the Excel sheet to, of Excel's sheets, with absolutely every classroom from every school in the district, so I'm roughly thinking we're talking thousands of classrooms, and you went through with the projections of, you know, what first graders do we have now in that school, who will be second graders, projecting who's moving in, who's moving out, boundaries, so on and so forth. So this was not just a, a number that was said, oh, you know, if we put twenty-eight as our cap, then we can, you know, we can eliminate this many teachers, you know, that we have to hire, or whatever. So I know, and I appreciate that so much work went into it, and it was so purposeful. So our current cap on elementary is twenty-four, and the average is about twenty-one and a half. So if we move our cap for elementary for this coming year to twenty-eight, the average, and again, all of this is just best guessing at the moment, I understand, around twenty-two. There are some classes that will be at the twenty-eight, and we are purpose, we have almost twice as many student-teachers this year as we did last year. We have eighty-seven student-teachers coming in, and your intent, I think that's right, isn't it, a number like that?
We're over a hundred.
Over a hundred now? Oh dang. Okay, so absolutely, every teacher gets a student. But the point being that you, you know which classes are going to have a higher-than-average number, and our intent is to give those classes a teacher, not, not just a para, but a teacher in the classroom with them. At the middle school level, the cap was twenty-six, moving up to thirty. Do you know what the averages were or might be for middle school?
Secondary in general, we tend to look at secondary as a whole.
Okay.
For, not including non-classroom, not including deans and curriculum specialists and whatnot. The student-to-teacher ratio was nineteen to one.
Okay.
The school year we just finished, we are going to twenty-two to one.
Okay.
So, an increase now, please, student-to-teacher ratio is not class size.
Right.
I don't want to leave that impression.
But we are going to be looking at class sizes for purposes of assigning our over a hundred student-teachers. And I happen to know, as an aside, that Dr. Logan is determined to do whatever she can to make sure every single one of those student-teachers comes and works at OBS. So we will be baking cookies, and we will be having parties, and we will make sure, right, that every single one of them comes-
Dr. Logan has guaranteed me that she would visit each student-teacher personally, and I would invite each of you to visit student-teachers if you're able and willing as well.
Would love to. We should set that schedule up. And I know that there will be sessions when we have an opportunity to do that, just like we did last summer with the, the summer interns last summer. One other question that has come to me by way of email and whatnot is, if we end up, a lot of teachers are in the school they're in because they like that school, and with this expanding classroom size, you kind of alluded, we may end up with some extra teachers in some schools, which would necessarily have to get reassigned to another school. Do you have any idea whether that, what the proportions of that possibility are?
It is still a bit early, as principals are going through schedules for us as well. At the elementary level, it was very few teachers. The number we originally had was well under twenty, as we go forward. And in that case, we'd follow a process that we've used for years, in that we get teacher input, we ask for volunteers, and we work with teachers to give them choices where they go. Secondary's a lot more difficult, because you're dealing with individual certifications. I can't move a teacher and expect them to teach anything, they've got to be certified to teach that, or we have to work with that. So the movement there may be a little bit more, because it ties more to certification than it does necessarily to teachers as we go forward. But again, offering choices to teachers, working with teachers, and our goal is any teacher that ends up changing schools due to any class size change or teacher shortage would be notified before July first.
Okay, thank you. And I know that one of the other things that you told us was your goal was to make sure there was a teacher in every classroom. We get a lot of suggestions, we get a lot of great suggestions, like why can't we be rotating certified TAC people through the different classrooms? And while that would provide a warm body, I know that our objective is to have the same warm body every day in those classrooms, and hopefully, we will be able to accomplish that. Thank you very much. Shoot, I just had another question. Give me two seconds, and then I'll just say whatever.
Whatever.
Whatever. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for doing this with us, so that we could get moved on.
Ms. Juarez.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a concern at the secondary level, where you said it is more difficult in trying to assign these teachers, and it is a conversation that I have had with someone at that level. You know, it's, again, is the principal really going to have a lot of judgment as to which teachers are going to have to get transferred out, or there's not a choice because of the need, because of the certification that you're talking about? Is that correct?
So at the secondary level, we are placing positions on hold, because we know that there's no staff to fill them. The worst thing we can do for our kids is to schedule a class and not have a teacher ready for that, and students show up day one, there'd be no teacher. Then we're putting someone there at the very last minute that's not prepared and doesn't provide an outstanding educational experience for those kids. As we work through staffing with principals, saying, school X, we're looking at placing ten positions on hold, you have- You have 12 vacancies right now, so we're not going to fill 10 of those vacancies. Let's look at your schedule. How can we do that?" And as we go through that, in high school especially, you start getting into certifications. Well, I was fully staffed math, but as I reduce sections, I, I don't need this math teacher. So then we would, HR would come in and talk to the math teachers, seek their input, seek principal input, ask for volunteers first, and then work with them to assign them to a school that does need a math teacher. So the high school movement looks a little bit different because it gets really tied into that certification. It is a process, and it's not something that always happens quickly. But it, it is heavily involved with communication, it's heavily involved with input, both the principal and the teacher level. And it's really looking at that schedule to get the best possible for our students. Ms. Erdenberger, and I've said this several times, and I want to thank her for saying this again, our goal is to have a teacher in every classroom that loves and cares for each one of our kids. Our kids deserve that, our kids need that, and our teachers need that.
Well, you know, I mean, obviously, at that secondary level, when we have these contingencies like this, I mean, I guess I'm concerned about the morale, you know, and what that's going to do. And I do hope that it does work out that teachers are going to be able to volunteer and that maybe we're going to have a sufficient number to make the changes that we need. But I am concerned about it being, being forced upon them. I mean, I realize with our teacher shortage that there might not be any options there, but I guess I would just like to say if a teacher is forced to go and make a change that they really are against and they didn't want to, that maybe down the road, when we have the staffing that's adequate and our needs have been met, that maybe that teacher would be able to go back to the school that they were forced to leave. I, I hope that in the, you know, down the road, we are going to be flexible in working with these teachers who are making these sacrifices for the shortages that we have right now. I really want to put forth that thought.
And definitely, Ms. Juarez, and we actually have done that in the past and will continue to do that.
And another question that I had, do we actually have in the classroom structure, have we ever tried that a teacher can work in the morning and a different teacher work in the afternoon? Does that, do we actually have anything like that right now?
So we are advertising currently for part-time teachers. 10, 15 years ago, we moved away from that because of cost, the cost of benefits versus the cost of teacher. But we, they should begin advertising for part-time teachers again. We use part-time teachers already with speech-language pathologists, school psychologists. They're not a teacher, I understand, but in some of our groups. We are looking at part-time teachers specifically for literacy, for special ed, for world languages, but we consider it in every area. Part-time teachers can do great things for us. One of the things we want to be careful of, you'll hear teachers talk about something called a job share. And job share is something that we have concerns about because kids have, a fifth-grade class may have one teacher in the morning and one teacher in the afternoon. And that can be very difficult at times, and it's not always the fairest for the teachers as well. So trying to avoid those situations, but using part-time teachers where they can support us best.
Okay. I, I think that, you know, I guess I'm familiar with job share from when I was working before, you know, I retired and, you know, having that team approach, hopefully, we could, with the crisis that we're going through right now, that I'm hoping that that's a solution that will help us. I know that there are teachers who are interested in that, because I've heard from them. So I, I'm glad that we are going to look at that as a possible solution, because I'm very supportive, you know, of any kind of creativity that we can come up with to try to meet our needs. Thank you.
Vice President Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Holman. Hopefully, we have covered a lot of the information that people wanted to hear. I would like to reiterate what Mr. Tealyn said. Please, please reach out to us to have a dialogue if there is something that is still of concern that you think we should have asked, didn't, whatever. But for the moment, I move approval of the proposed amendment to the plan for expenditure of 280 million and change allocated to the district by the Nebraska Department of Education from the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, ESER 2 Fund, and the ESER 3 Fund, which was previously approved by the Board of Education at September 9th, 2021, as discussed this evening.
Hey, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Real quick, I had one more comment before we.
There's a motion on the floor, though, right now. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yep. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I was waiting for the conversation to get back around to the ESERS portion of it, not, not staff sizes. So I, I appreciate the conversation. Dr. Logan, I appreciate your, your explanation of why this is happening now and not, say, two, two and a half months ago. You know, I agree, and I think we all agree, that we would have liked to see it happen sooner, but, you know, with, with timing, with how we can spend the money, with getting the approval, obviously, that wasn't, that wasn't possible. That being said, I'd just like to say I'm, I, I support the plan. I'm a little bit hesitant to vote for it. The reason there is I'm, I'm a little bit worried that we're going to look at this as actually fixing the problem. I think the, the problem is more than just funding for our staff, and while they totally deserve it, I, I think, you know, going forward, we also need to address why teachers, why staff aren't happy where they are. You know, addressing why staff don't feel valued, why they don't feel respected, why they don't feel listened to. And so I would hope that going forward, we realize that, you know, well, this is a small piece of it, we still have work to do.
Mr. Snow, raise your hand. Raise for discussion.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. First say that I'm not the best politician. In hindsight, I wish, I mentioned this earlier, that I would have been able, not just me, but the community, to have this as an information item. There were a lot of questions at the table. And just like Mr. had some hesitancy, because one of the things I want to make sure is that the individuals that just don't come to the podium, but the individuals watching the many teachers and staff are well-informed about everything that's in this package before we move forward. Whether it changes or not, I would like the leadership that comes to this podium to work with the district. I know we have a new incoming president, and I look forward to that email for us to meet and have that dialogue, to have that change. And Dr. Logan, I know you put a lot of work into this, and I completely support you in everything you do. And I think this, when it was presented to us and presented to me, it was an amazing plan, and I think it still is. But I think we have to make sure we get everyone on board and have everyone's questions answered and concerns. Now, I do know we're not going to make everyone happy, but I do at least would like everyone's voices not to just be heard, but people that are watching that may have additional questions. To the speakers that came to the podium, I would just say that, you know, I wrote down some notes, so I won't take too long. To the second speaker, thank you for your continued perspective on this, and you really helped me tonight. It's not a discussion, it's my reason why I'm not going to support this. To the Spanish teacher, you really, hopefully, with your questions answered, we can find ways to retain teachers. And to the seventh speaker and the eighth speaker, not just have that dialogue, but we do understand, I at least understand now, that these were not just underlying issues, but the decision that would be made here tonight, whether we support or not, is the end-all, be-all. And how do we have that discussion in making sure that the dollar amount or whatever we vote on, those are not just considered, but are expressed in our district? I know there are some teachers and staff that are on vacation already. So I wish this would have been an information item to allow people to have two weeks before an actual vote, to have that dialogue. And that's the reason why I would not be voting for this unless amendment was made to make this an information item and make the next board meeting an action item. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. So for me, and it's been explained very thoroughly, this is an opportunity for something to be provided for our educators, putting them first. There were other things that were presented to me, and I said, "No, I don't support that. I can't support that." But getting the, the detailed items of this plan and seeing how it's rolling out, and my vote is very, very intentional, and it's an action that has taken deep thought. And I hope it's recognized as such, is if I have an opportunity to give to the teachers, then I'm going to vote yes to give to the teachers. It's not like they didn't earn it, they put in the work, they've been there, and they're still here. They're still dedicated to doing this work. And so any opportunity I get to give to our educators, I'm definitely going to support it. Of course, this isn't a solution, but it's actually a, I, I see it as a step in the right direction. If it's, there's a way that you can say, "I acknowledge your work, I appreciate your work," and it's in the form of a stipend, by all means, I'm going to support it. And then the other issues that are, are coming up right now, like you just said, Spencer, what are those underlying issues and how do we address those? Those are all going to be things that are going to be priority for me, continue to be a priority for me, but I cannot have an opportunity to give to our educators and say no. So I will be supporting this.
Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. I want to express my gratitude to the teachers who responded to me as I reached out and who reached out to me proactively, and those here tonight. The response to this proposal has been varied from teachers even. One teacher called this proposal a slap in the face. Another teacher reached out to wonder if the money could be better spent on hiring bonuses, much like the young man that was in here tonight, worried about our, our students. One teacher told me that she was excited. But most teachers that I have spoken to have seen this the way that I see it. It is not an insult, it is not a fix-all, but a devotion of a significant portion of limited resources to recognize their efforts and the challenges that they're facing, no more and no less. It's one significant thing that we can do to recognize the work of our staff as we continue and engage, to engage them about how to lessen the significant load they have been asked to carry. I have no hesitations. From my perspective, this is simple. There is probably more language tonight in the presentation around retention than I think when I originally saw the proposal. But again, to me, it's simple. This is money in the pockets of our teachers, and it shouldn't be delayed any longer. This board and the administration have to continue to listen to teachers about the challenges that they face and use the power of our system to continue to clear the path for teachers to connect with our students and educate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tealyn. Vice President Erdenberger?
I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Smith and Mr. Tealyn said. It, I have to confess, makes no sense to me that because we can't solve all of the problems right now, we don't take this particular action. Of course, there are additional steps that we want to take, and everybody on this board and on the staff and administration and teachers and everybody is fully aware of that. And so we need to, when we have an opportunity to do something like this, we need to take that opportunity. Turning it into an information item instead of an action item, A, could have been requested, and we could have turned it into an information item, but B, the sooner we vote on it, the sooner it goes to the Nebraska Department of Education, and the sooner we have approval and money to send checks out to all of our staff members. So to me, there's no question that we take this first step enthusiastically and continue to move forward. Thank you very much. Can I call the question, please?
Yes. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
I, I have questions. I'm bringing I.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
No.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to receipt of reports. Moving on to receipt of reports, we have one report on the agenda this evening. Item J1, Head Start Monthly Board Report for April 2022. Vice President Erdenberger?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel negotiations and legal advice.
I have a motion on the floor to go into closed session by Vice President Erdenberger. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Head. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose of a closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel negotiations and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 8:40 PM. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 8:40 PM.
Let the meeting reflect that the board came out of closed session at 9:48. Meeting adjourned.
Let the meeting reflect that the board came out of closed session at 9:48. Meeting adjourned.